Good afternoon, welcome back everyone. My name is Emily Chapuis, I'm the Deputy General Counsel at the Copyright Office. We are continuing day two of our Section 1201 rulemaking hearings. And this session will be focusing on Class Four, Computer Programs Generative AI Research. Before we get started, I have just a few reminders. The goal of today's hearing is to focus on legal and factual issues that could benefit from additional development or clarification. We do appreciate the written comments and we've reviewed them carefully. So in this session, my colleagues on the government side will be asking specific questions and we'll call on participants to give us responses. Please use your raise hand function to indicate that you'd like to speak and we'll know to recognize you. You can also raise your real hand or wave at us if that's not working. Additionally, this hearing is being livestreamed. It's being recorded and transcribed by a court reporter. The video and transcript will be posted on the Copyright Office website after the hearings conclude. We ask that everyone speak loudly and clearly and please mute your microphones. Anytime that you're not speaking. Sorry about that, hi. And for those of you who are listening in, on Thursday afternoon, we will have a public participation session from four to five P M. Anyone who would like to participate in that session can sign up using the link in the chat or on the Copyright Office website. Public comments may relate to any of the classes, but we ask that public participation be limited to three minutes per person. Okay, we'll turn now to Class Four. And let's begin with introductions, starting with the Copyright Office. Melinda, do you want to kick us off?
Hi, my name is Melinda Kern, I'm an attorney advisor with the Office of General Counsel.
Hi, this is Brandy Carl, I'm Assistant General Counsel in the Office of General Counsel.
And we're also joined today by one of our colleagues from NTIA.
Good afternoon, everyone, Kevin Lee, Special Advisor for AI Policy at NTIA.
Uh, now, I'd like to also invite the participants to introduce themselves, uh, starting with the proponents of the proposed exemption. Uh, and when you introduce yourself, will you please state your name and the organization that you're representing? Let's start with human intelligence. Are they here? Uh, Hacker One?
Hi, I'm Alana Cohen, I'm the Chief Legal and Policy Officer of Hacker One.
And Open Policy?
Hi, everyone, uh, my name is Amit Lazari, I'm the CEO and co-founder of Open Policy.
Hacking Policy Council?
Hello, I'm Harley Geiger and I am the founder and coordinator of the Hacking Policy Council.
Cranium AI?
Yes, so hello, everyone, uh, Josh Hargis, uh, Chief of AI Security here.
And MIT?
Hi, I'm Shane Longprey, uh, I'm a PhD student at MIT, conducting research into AI, but I'm here in support of the comments submitted by academic researchers in the field of AI testing and evaluation. Thank you.
Uh, and let's do the opponents of the proposed exemption, please, uh, starting with ACS?
Hi, uh, good afternoon, everybody, my name is Michael Ayers, I'm, uh, Legal Counsel for Advanced Access Content System Licensing Administrator, uh, more familiarly known as AACS LA, and we provide, uh, content protection technology for Blu-ray discs.
Thanks, um, joint creators.
Hi, this is, uh, Steve England of Generon Block, and I am here representing the Entertainment Software Association, the Motion Picture Association, the News Media Alliance, and the Recording Industry Association of America.
Um, and ACT?
My name is Morgan Reed, I'm the President of ACT, the App Association.
And DVD CCA?
All right, David Taylor, Counsel to DVD CCA, which provides, um, licensing technology for CSS, which protects, um, content on DVD player, DVDs and DVD players.
Did I miss anyone? Okay, great, thank you all for being here, and with that, I will turn it over to my colleague Melinda Kern to start off the questions for Class Four.
I will start off. Um, could the proponents please provide some examples of scenarios they're trying to address with the proposed exemption? In providing your example, um, can you please keep the following in mind? What are the copyrighted works that you have in mind for this class? Is it the system prompt or something else? What are the types of TPMs that you're concerned about? What are the different circumvention methods you have in mind? How do the activities you have in mind qualify as circumvention? Do these examples also apply to non-generative AI models? If so, how are they different? This question is for supporters.
I know there's a lot to unpack there, but feel free to take it piece by piece.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to speak, but do any of the, any of the more operational colleagues want to chime in on that? They're just because we're specifically being asked about types of research.
Why don't you get us started on that one, thank you.
Sure, um, so some of the protected works that, uh, we are, um, looking to access through this exemption include, uh, broadly computer programs, right, which are a subcategory of literary work. And within that subcategory, uh, specifically the, the user interface, the code that drives the algorithm, uh, and APIs. The, uh, TPMs are the ones that we had cited in our comments. Um, they include account requirements, rate limits, and algorithmic safeguards, or so-called guardrails. Um, the particular set of users that we're describing here are persons that are performing good faith research as defined. And so the particular class of works and the specific set of users are similar parameters to what we see in existing exemptions under Section 1201, such as the security testing exemption. So a potential scenario, and I, again, I'll leave it to some of my more, uh, uh, hands-on keyboard colleagues who performed this research to describe them. Um, but a, a potential scenario is a researcher that, uh, is performing, um, uh, research on discrimination in a, an AI system, uh, they need an account in order to access that user interface, as well as this, the code that drives the algorithm. And, uh, they engage in, uh, prompt engineering, uh, prompt injections. And upon, uh, and, and they lose their account as a result of this, so they become suspended once the, uh, the AI system operator discovers that they are performing this research. To circumvent their account suspension, which has blocked them from getting access to the, uh, protected works, uh, they create a new account. Uh, the Terms of Service forbid this, because the Terms of Service say that, uh, only one account per user. When they are creating their new account, the circumvention includes the creation of a new username, a new password. Uh, the, they may need to use a new email address, because their, uh, original email address was banned. If there is a subscription, they may need to use a new credit card as well. Um, they may need to use a new IP address, so they use an IP address rotator. Um, but they have circumvented this and created a new account, um, and they are able to continue with their research. So those are, that is one possible scenario. Uh, you asked a question regarding whether or not, uh, the, uh, it is different, whether it is generative AI or not generative AI. And I think the answer in general is no. Um, these TPMs are present in many systems. Um, the protected works at issue are also present in many systems. And the types of research into AI trustworthiness can also apply to non-generative systems.
Um, I see. Yes, I'm, um, Amit Lazari with Open Policy, um, I'm happy to expand, um, on these comments and, um, agree and support everything Harley just mentioned. So just to kind of provide context on the type of AI auditing, uh, mechanisms we have seen and, um, these have been, you know, broadly documented, including by policymakers and firework as type of testing methods that are imported in order to uncover unintended consequences of AI. Uh, so we are familiar, for example, with audit methods that include, uh, things like SOC puppeting, creation of users in order to exhibit different type of features, uh, or type of attributes, uh, in order to kind of test the system for potential AI bias and audit. Uh, these are well documented, for example, the SNC decision that was in the DC District in the context of the Computer Fraud and Abuse Act, uh, documented some of these auditing methods, and we in fact have seen how Terms of Use uh, can prohibit those type of system, and as Harley mentioned, in combination together with the Terms of Service and the ability to suspend the account. So the exercise of a technical measure, uh, can prevent such type of tests, uh, very useful and important testing. Uh, also important to note that, um, exactly like in the executive order on AI and, uh, as policymakers are recognizing, there are broad set of unintended consequences, and there are broad set of types of AI systems, and AI systems are defined broadly, they're not just, um, generative AI type of systems, but we're really seeing a very, you know, uh, broad definition of AI in, in policy. And therefore, uh, it's important that the exemption, as we said in the comments, uh, will, uh, apply broadly as well. Um, so I think, you know, do, I am looking, uh, into our technical colleagues here on the line to talk a little bit more about their type of research, but we are seeing this intersection between security research and broader safety research and bias research, and there, there is a broad set of testing that is being done that can be characterized as broader than just, uh, traditional security techniques that are needed in order to evaluate, um, the type of unintended consequences, uh, of AI that we see today and that would emerge in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Longprey.
Yeah, I'm happy to expand on that a little bit, so I'm not a lawyer, but I am a AI researcher. And, um, in addition to what Harley and Amit said, uh, maybe I can point first to the, um, open letter that was signed by three hundred and fifty researchers in the field that we cite in our comments. And that letter sort of had three points that seemed to gain broad traction in the community. The first is that this type of research into AI trustworthiness, that includes bias, discrimination, misinformation generation, and some other things, um, is really timely and critically important, and there isn't enough of it. And the second point is that this good faith research, and many of the researchers that are even doing this research, um, are feeling a form of chilling effects uh, because of fear of potential liability for violating Terms of Service and or trying to circumvent, um, guardrails or creating new accounts after their accounts have been terminated, um, in order to do this, this good faith research, and so that community in the letter that was widely signed is supporting broader protections for that type of public interest in our view beneficial research. Um, I'll also add, and then talk a little bit more about the types of guardrails, if that'd be beneficial. But you asked at the end about generative AI versus other types of AI. I'll add that, um, in our view, this distinction is a little bit artificial. Um, there are many similar systems and models used, for example, for facial recognition that is not a generative model, but it still has, uh, very important consequences for society, there's still TPMs, they're still important to evaluate these systems for bias, which, uh, there've already been many cases discussed for that particular application. So we think this research is important in both those places.
Thank you, we'll go Mr. Taylor, then Mr. Hargis, please.
Yes, thank you, um, I think it's, uh, very important to, um, ascertain what is the circumvention that's going on here. And what I've heard that is traditionally understood to be 1201 access control is only the use of password and the, and the proverbial walled garden. And in terms of 1201, um, act of circumvention, the only way that I'm familiar with an act of circumvention being really in the terms of a password is a brute force attack. And when I read the initial comments and even when I read the reply, I did not get the notion that they were going to use brute force attacks for the purposes of gaining access to, um, whatever, gen, whatever they may mean by generative AI. Um, and so Terms of Use that they may violate, those aren't governed by 1201, and this rulemaking really has no ability to address that.
Thank you, and I apologize, Dr. Hargis.
Oh, all good. Um, so yeah, I think in the original example, I, I do want to, I do want to support, you know, kind of everything that was said there. Um, that scenario of being, you know, kicked out of an account while you're doing prompt injection. Um, some of this is viewed from a lens of red teaming, I know that was submitted also as a, as a concept, um, that we'd like to be, uh, you know, as part of this. Um, red teaming can uncover, you know, things within security, but it can also cover, uh, on things in, uh, trustworthiness, um, bias, you know, other, other types of, uh, things that come out of these models. Um, agree with everyone that there is no distinction between AI and generative AI. Um, you know, a year from now, two years from now, we, we may not be having this generative AI discussion, it may be a very different discussion. Um, so I do want to make sure that those, those lines are, are, are clear. And, and further, uh, you know, th- this idea of kind of red teaming, all mo, all models, all AI models are susceptible to some type of attack. Um, they can be broken and manipulated. Um, this, this ability to be able to go in and, and do, you know, sort of this red teaming or, or, you know, this analysis, this research onto these models, um, so that we can better understand the landscape from a security perspective, from, from all of these other assurance perspectives, um, is really important. It informs the community, uh, there's things like Mitre Atlas, uh, which collects, uh, you know, a lot of these uh, security incidents and that, these different tactics and procedures, uh, there's things like OWASP, um, that are, they're, you know, they're trying to understand, uh, you know, what are the top ten, uh, you know, items that you need to care about when you're thinking about, uh, generative AI and, and other types of machine learning? Um, so these types of activities are really important, and so we just want to make sure that, uh, you know, researchers and practitioners uh, that are trying to inform the community about, about these types of, uh, AI assurance issues, um, are able to do those, uh, jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Hi, thank you, I, I want to try to clarify one thing, which I think, um, and it's funny, I, I was looking at Harley's window, I think I can almost see my building through his window over there, I'll wave at him as we cross the street as a former venerable person. Um, here's the thing that I thought needs to be clarified. I don't believe that Harley is asking for this, but I don't think the proponents of this, are you arguing that companies should not be able to block an unknown hacker? Because i- if, if you don't contact the company in advance to tell them that you're red teaming, you are essentially a potentially malicious hacker and and while you're performing good faith research, I would say that it's good security practices to block a person from using the same credit card, to block a person from using the same email. As a former person on that other side of the table, I, I would be, I would be remiss in my duties if I wasn't implementing every possible barrier. So I want to clarify, it's that, that the proponents are saying they don't want to have, face a copyright consequence from taking this action, or do you think that there should not be TPMs preventing you from doing those activities? And I just want to clarify that, because, uh, that's a very different, that's a different, very different take than, than the idea of, well, we shouldn't face a copyright consequence or a lawsuit after the fact.
Thank you, Mr. England, please.
So after hearing, uh, uh, the proponents identified a number of scenarios in response to the, uh, office's original question, I think it's important to observe that, uh, the proposal, uh, that has been, uh, put forth in regulatory language by HPC and all the comments, including some of the ones, uh, just in the last few minutes, asking for an exemption that is wildly broader than the scenarios that have been, uh, uh, just identified. Yet, uh, the, uh, once we move beyond generative AI, uh, AI is ubiquitous. And so as it affects, uh, uh, my clients, uh, uh, we have comments from, uh, DVD CCA and ACS talking about, uh, hacking the software on DVD players and Blu-ray players, but, uh, uh, I, I think we're talking about, uh, breaking the TPMs, um, video games that have AI features. I think we are talking about, uh, uh, circumventing the TPMs that, uh, provide user authentication for, uh, streaming services like Spotify and Netflix, and news sites and social media that have, uh, uh, recommendation engines powered by AI. And it's not hard to think of lots of other systems out in the world that are powered by AI. Credit card fraud prevention, uh, autonomous vehicles, uh, you name it. And so, uh, we should all be clear that, uh, when we say we want, uh, uh, to be able to conduct, uh, testing on all AI, we're talking about, uh, a tremendous range of things. Uh, and in terms of the scenarios themselves, uh, so I, I think somebody suggested, it's, it's obviously not in the office's power to immunize users from Terms of Use violations, uh, or prevent account suspensions. And, uh, it's not entirely clear as a general matter whether, uh, everything that's been talked about here is a circumvention, but important to recognize that, uh, there are very good reasons for online services to, uh, implement account authentication to ensure that users of subscription services, for example, uh, uh, are who they say they are and are, uh, using the services in a way that they paid for. Uh, uh, beyond that, the rate limitations and, uh, uh, limitations on multiple accounts serve important purposes of allocating system, uh, usage. And, uh, uh, so if people are exceeding those limitations, uh, they may be a malicious actor, they may be taking, you know, scarce resources away from other users. And, uh, uh, that, that's a problem that, uh, shouldn't be ignored here. So, uh, this is a very different proposal from kinds of, uh, uh, security research proposals the office has considered in the past that don't have implications for online services or, uh, other users of online services. And, uh, it's particularly inappropriate, uh, where, uh, AI is incidental to, uh, service providing, providing access to creative content.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger, please.
Thank you, I'd like to respond to, uh, the three opponents. So first, on, uh, the question of whether or not the proposal is, uh, forbidding service providers from blocking quote-unquote unknown hackers, um, I would argue that this is a very serious misunderstanding of the law and a, uh, misreading of the plain language of Section 1201 and our exemption. Uh, as, as noted, Section 1201 does not prohibit a, a service provider or the owner-operator of a computer program or, uh, owner of a protected work from, uh, taking steps like suspending accounts, that is not the issue, it's not what our exemption or really any exemption proposed under Section 1201 would do. Uh, second, on brute forcing passwords, uh, this too, I think is a, is a serious misunderstanding of the law, and I think that we should avoid hyperbolic diversions. Uh, Section 1201 A3 notes that circumventing its technological measure is bypassing or avoiding a technological measure. So passwords in the scenarios that we described are involved. Um, but as described, the bypassing or the avoiding of that technological measure does not have to involve brute forcing passwords. Um, lastly, Mr. England, uh, described a range of software that may be covered by our proposed exemption. He's correct in all of that. Uh, what we are proposing is an exemption that is cabined to computer programs that run AI systems. This is actually narrower than several existing exemptions. Most existing exemptions apply to computer programs. Uh, so Section 1201 has an exemption for security testing, uh, for encryption, for reverse engineering. And they apply to computer programs. Encryption runs on more things in AI, security, uh, issues are inherent in all software, not just computer programs that run artificial intelligence. Uh, so again, I think that the, the boundaries with, uh, of our proposed exemption are not overbroad and in fact are narrower than several existing exemptions, thank you.
Thank you, all right, uh, Mr. Ayers?
Thank you, uh, actually, uh, responding also to Mr. Geiger, but, uh, uh, piggybacking a bit on Mr. England. Uh, ACS LA actually is, is very concerned for, for some of the reasons that, uh, Mr. England mentioned. And, uh, Mr. Geiger, to the extent that you're saying that the proposal is much narrower than we may be perceiving, I think that's, that's helpful, uh, but I, I would not necessarily point to a, uh, uh, a misstatement of the law on the parts of the opponents, as much as it is perhaps a failure of the proponents to have made a clear proposal, uh, about what is needed and, and what is, uh, uh, what is actually on the table. Uh, our concern, uh, does extend to, especially having clarified today that, uh, uh, referring to AI is not exclusive to generative AI, that it includes other, uh, AI tools that are not arguably, uh, classified as generative. Uh, and so to what extent does that impact a Blu-ray player in which a manufacturer has incorporated a, a, an up-resing tool that might be considered an AI application for the purposes of, uh, taking a lower resolution, a resolution piece of audiovisual content and presenting it in a, uh, attractive higher resolution form? Uh, to what extent is there, uh, a concern about uh, how, uh, uh, the implication or how the, the application of that, uh, uh, general, of that AI tool, uh, impacts, uh, how, uh, to the extent there's racial differences in, in how people are presented in the up-resed content? Uh, you know, so does that suddenly mean that this, uh, uh, Blu-ray player in question and perhaps even the disc in the tray being played, uh, are now subject to the exemption? So those are the concerns, uh, that we're coming here with, and, uh, so it's, it's very helpful to hear that the proponents are, are perceived their, uh, would like us to, uh, perceive their proposal as narrow. I don't think it's as narrow as you think it is, uh, as, as currently proposed. So, uh, I would, uh, propose that we, uh, look at, uh, uh, actually specifying a little more, uh, so we can clarify what, uh, what's actually on the table.
Thank you, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to invoke my moderator discretion here. Uh, this question, um, was very general, and we're glad everyone got a chance to answer it, but I would like to move on uh, and pass the mic over to Kevin Lee, so Kevin?
Thank you very much, I'd like to dig deeper into the question of what specific TPMs and underlying protected works, uh, could be at issue in this exemption. Um, you know, in particularly, and this is a question for both proponents and opponents, but I'd like to start with the proponents. I'd like to, uh, pose a couple hypotheticals. In particular, I'm, you know, mostly drawing off of the three categories of TPMs identified by the Hacking Policy Council in the reply comments. Um, and first, I'd like to start with, uh, you know, what the, um, uh, y- y- to what extent, uh, um, you, you know, wh- what is included in the computer programs? Uh, for example, are the, you know, if a AI system is trained on a system prompt, um, or an instruction prompt, uh, and, uh, and, uh, you know, uh, uh, someone uses prompt injection or researchers use prompt injection to try to obtain that copyrighted system prompt, is that considered part of the computer program at issue? If the model weights themselves have memorized some underlying, uh, underlying copyrighted work and regurgitates that copyrighted work in response to some kind of system prompt or as some kind of, uh, adversarial prompt, is that, uh, part of the computer program, uh, that is being circumvented? Um, and secondarily, I'd like for you to, uh, discuss in more detail what the algorithmic safeguards at question could be.
Maybe I can start, um, Kevin, thanks for the question. I, I think that I'm not a copyright expert, I'm a researcher again, but so I'll let defer some of those questions to others. But, um, when interacting with these programs and doing research on them, we are probing them in various ways to investigate, uh, them through the interface, like the playground that some of these models have. Uh, we're also investigating them, uh, through an API and probing different parts of the system, including the various filters and moderation on the inputs and also on the outputs. And as I understand it, those, uh, algorithms and elements of the system and software that govern that, um, may be, uh, the copyright material that we're interacting with and investigating. If I can address something really quickly about a prior comment that was made about how some of the research might not be, be overloading the system or not paying or something from, uh, whereas real customers do. All the research that I've seen and the people I've been speaking to, uh, are having their accounts suspended and have fear of liability when they're paying for their accounts and they are using the regular, uh, systems as they're, uh, meant to be used, except they're doing good faith academic research. And so that's not, you know, shirking costs the company has or something. Um, and I think there's an important distinction there, because otherwise it wouldn't be good faith.
And perhaps we could go now to Mr. Geiger?
Sure, uh, Mr. Lee, do I, do I understand your, your question correctly? Are you, are you asking if the output is one of the protected works that we are, uh, seeking access to?
Uh, I think that, you know, I would like to get clarification on what particular elements of a, you know, whether, for example, uh, you know, information that is contained within the AI model itself is, you know, you, do you view that as part of the protective work? The computer program?
Uh, like the training data?
Uh, or information that the model has learned from the training data? Or information that the model has learned from the training data?
So I think largely, I think that question is is moot, honestly. I think what we are seeking to, I I understand that the output of the of the the AI system may or may not be copyrighted. In some cases, the AI system owner explicitly says that they are relinquishing copyrights to to some of the output, particularly for generative models. The training data likewise, you know, that's that can be in a complex, a complex land as to whether or not that is that is protected. I think for purposes of the of the research, the protected works that we are talking about accessing are the the user interface. So there it's the, you know, when you log on to a an AI system to engage with it, it is the the software that you're viewing. Once you have gotten past your login window, which is the technological access barrier. And then number two, the the software that drives your engagement with the algorithm, the software that drives the algorithm itself, so the the code that is that is enabling the algorithm to work, which again is a computer program is a subcategory of literary works. And then lastly, there are forms of research that are undertaken on the APIs of of artificial intelligence systems as they appear in other instances. So as as they are licensed in in other places. So those those three computer programs are parts of examples of computer programs are what we are seeking access to, especially with this exemption. The, I think you had also asked about guardrails. Would you mind rephrasing your question, please?
Yeah, in the reply comments, the Hacking Policy Council discusses algorithmic safeguards as one category of potential TPMs that would need to be circum that that this exemption proposes to allow circumvention of. And that discussion, I I would appreciate going a bit deeper on that.
Sure. So this is just one one technique for artificial intelligence research, which is circumventing our guardrails, which are algorithmic safeguards that prevent the or are designed to prevent the AI system from engaging in activity like producing harmful content or engaging in bias. And part of the purpose of the the research is to essentially circumvent those those guardrails. And in doing so, they may access other features or enable the the AI system to operate in different ways. So for example, some research circumvents these guardrails by elevating user privileges. So essentially convincing the AI system that you are an administrator and therefore the guardrails no longer apply to you as a user, giving you greater access to unfiltered responses and from from the algorithm. There is one thing I'd like to to just highlight from an earlier earlier answer from Mr. Ayers. I thought that you had a brilliant example of artificial intelligence research that I would like to just highlight as as falling under our exemption. You had mentioned a Blu-ray player with an artificial intelligence tool that can up-res content. And the AI research would identify potential racial disparities with that up-resing. And I I think that that is a terrific example. That research would not violate copyrights. I think that research would be socially beneficial and is exactly the kind of research that we would envision as being encompassed by our exemption. And that research would then enable a further future up-res tool makers to avoid racial disparities in their in their tool. So I I do appreciate that example and and think that that is a a great one for purposes of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. I'm going to give Ms. Cohen a chance to speak as well, and then I'd like to hear from the opponents.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention, so Hacker One is a global leader in human powered security, but also trustworthiness testing. So I just wanted to try to answer your question about how we might try to seek to bypass algorithmic safeguards. And so, you know, the oftentimes the researchers that we will work with will seek to assess the behavior of the model, not just to understand sort of the rare instances in which we can get a a system to display inappropriate content or other undesirable outputs so that the underlying owner of the AI system can ultimately fix those undesir undesirable outputs for future use. That's a circumstance in which we would intentionally try to bypass any algorithmic safeguard.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Now I'd like to give the opponents a chance to address. And in particular, if you could address whether the algorithmic safeguards, in your view, count as technological protective measures under 1201, as well as, you know, whether whether and anything else on the previous comments that you'd like to address. Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Um, I it it's an interesting situation to find myself in one where in general, in the largest scope, I agree with the proponents in the sense that bias testing is really important. It's actually pretty critical. It's something that we have our own set of policies on on how we should do it. It's the question of venue and is 1201 the right vehicle? The thing that I'm struggling with right now is in in Mr. Geiger's recent example, I'm trying to figure out what he wants the Copyright Office to do because, as he established, and is the law well known. Systems have the right to essentially protect themselves through TPMs. And is he envisioning a world in which good faith researchers receive a token from the large language model or the foundation model level? And then that makes it clear that that other normal security procedures can be appropriately bypassed to continue the research. I I at this point in time, I'm not sure how how that works because without a token, we're going to throw everything against the wall to make sure they can't break in. And that's the that's the point that I want to go with. The second part that came up earlier, and I think it's really critical is, and and let's face it, Kevin, we all know this very well. AI is essentially a marketing term. Because in a lot of ways, a rules engine, a sufficiently sophisticated rules engine is essentially sometimes classified as AI. So I think that with the expansion of this, moving it from generative AI or predictive AI into a lot of other fields is going to really open up questions that I haven't even considered. When this first happened, this was really around generative AI. And I was hoping we could look for kind of narrow scope opportunities to solve the situation. But if it opens up to things like rules engines and kind of the whole panoply of general use software, it raises a whole lot of questions. So to your primary answer, I think that's the big question. It doesn't seem like this is the venue for the Copyright Office. Through the EO, there's a lot of other agencies that are working on these exact issues. And we are going to have to figure out how do you provide a good faith research effort with the tools to do the kind of bias research they want to do, but not in a way that compromises the security for untoward actors?
Let me pass it to Mr. England, but before I do that, let me just say that one question that would be helpful to answer is, is is it a 1201 violation absent an exemption to use?
Thank you.
What the comment refers to as a jailbreak, a jailbreak prompt to attempt to reveal information about the underlying AI system?
So I raised my hand to respond to the various descriptions of software response to Mr. Lee's original question. And at the risk of repeating a point that I've made earlier, I think it's important to highlight that once again, the answers that Mr. Lee received do not at all resemble the regulatory language that was proposed. Actually, I have a very difficult time parsing the regulatory language that was proposed. There's a lot of stuff in proposed paragraph one about what devices circumvention occurs on. And I have a hard time relating that to different kinds of AI systems. But once once you say that it has to occur on the proper devices, the exemption is simply for computer programs solely for the purpose of good faith AI trustworthiness research at any computer under the sun. And so we heard about, well, it's the UI or it's the APIs or it's some some other software. But that's not what the exemption says. The exemption says any software under the sun. And so again, that extends to things like the security software on a DVD player. It extends to the user authentication software on the streaming service and anything under the sun that that uses AI.
With with a view to helping us get clarity on what exactly the TPMs are, question for you, Mr. England, and then also Mr. Taylor and Mr. Ayers, is, you know, whether the specific example of a jailbreak prompt would count as a 1201 violation absent an exemption in your view?
I don't think the proponents have made enough of a record for me to opine on that question. I I think it's just not clear on the record before us.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I'll take a stab. I think your 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 first set of questions, I mean, overall is very good because it gets to the heart that there aren't enough examples or any examples of what we're really talking about here. And we just didn't wake up overnight with the security, good faith, security research proceeding after proceeding. We had example after example. But to answer your more recent question, no. I mean, I had to think about this a lot. I had to think about when we say technical measures, what are we talking about? And 1201 defines technical measures that are protected are those that are access controls and copy controls. And what are actually described here, I think, could approximate maybe a copy control. But it's, I don't know, I can't, I I I know in my mind, when I read it, that's not an access control. And so I had to look at to see what are we talking about here? And the only thing I can kind of come up with is the interactiveness of, I'm going to step on somebody's toes here, and I apologize, video games, right? And so what we're talking about is maybe is referred to as cheats. When you do something to the video game that enhances the play, we're really talking about, you know, the performance of it. We're talking about, you know, what kind of cheats can be put in place to result in a in the program acting differently. And I don't think that is an access control. And I I think that you just look at those examples and you draw the analogy.
I I've I I I've been asked to move this along. If I could give Mr. Ayers, Mr. Geiger, and Mr. Longprey 15 seconds each, I'm so sorry.
Sure, real quick. So just, I I would note that, yes, I have, I'm skeptical that it would be TP, a circumvention action that's covered in this proceeding. I would also note, though, that we have sort of gone over the added other TPMs to the list when we talk about the research project that Mr. Geiger thought might actually be interesting in that it does impact systems that are encrypted and would require something other than just using a fake ID or or going beyond the terms of use.
Mr. Geiger?
Yes, so you asked, is it a 1201 violation to use a jailbreak prompt to reveal information about the underlying system? If that information about the underlying system is a protected work and a guardrail is preventing access to that information and bypassing or avoiding that guardrail via a jailbreak prompt gives you access to that information about the underlying system, then I would argue yes. And if prompt engineering, jailbreak prompts, guardrail circumvention is not a circumventing a technological protection measure, that would be an excellent thing for the opponents to end the Copyright Office to clarify in writing. Real quick, if I may, because there were a lot of questions, what is Mr. Geiger asking the Copyright to do? They were describing a token for for good faith research, et cetera. Without the token, we'll throw everything against the wall to prevent this unauthorized use. All of that is appropriate, actually. And the only thing that we are asking the Copyright Office to do is to create an exemption for for good faith AI trustworthiness research under section 1201. That would shield them from liability for good faith research under section 1201. And this, the Copyright Office, is an extremely appropriate venue for that request. Indeed, it is the only venue for that request. As far as the scope goes with every type of software under the sun, I would just reiterate again that that is exactly the scope of numerous exemptions that exist right now under section 1201. Computer programs.
No problem.
We have only a limited amount of time. Mr. Longprey, if you could make a very brief point?
Yeah, I can skip mine. I just wanted to echo what Harley was saying in response to Mr. Reed that we're not asking for a special token or infrastructure. It's an exemption. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Longprey. I'm going to pass this back to Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. I just had a quick question that I hope the ACT slash the App Association could please expound upon that was within their comments. So the App Association states that granting the exemption mandates to allow open access to otherwise protected software. Could you please elaborate on that point? And for the other participants that are opposing the proposed exemption as well, what works would be affected if granted? And if everybody can please keep their remarks very short, we're almost down to our last hour, and we have a lot to get through. Thank you.
Yes, this is Morgan. I I think we've covered a lot of it in the back and forth that we've just had with Mr. Lee's question. And I think I I appreciate the clarity that Harley and others have provided around around what they're asking for, but it it does to support my fellow opposition, I feel like it has moved around a little bit through the through the original proposal that we that we filed against and what we're hearing today. And it, to the nearest I can, that we've gotten clarity around it, it is post-fact liability protection. So researcher does the action, they break in. The the company whose LLM it was that they went after is unhappy in some way or form or another and goes after them for a copyright breach. So what they really want, what they're really asking for is post-fact liability protection. And and that helps clarify it. As far as the systems and what that means is it it's it gets back to the same thing I said to Kevin earlier with Mr. Lee earlier, which is if we open this up not just from generative AI and the idea of foundation models, but to basically all computer programs, I don't, I think that this, the the size and scope of this gets really large to handle. So to answer your question, most of what we said in the earlier ones, I think it's clear now that the concern we have is this is strictly post-fact liability protection. That could be good, could be not, but I'm not sure this is the right venue for it. And then finally, I am concerned about expanding it from AGI to what amounts to all all computer programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, as far as the the scope of the works it would be covered, I I think our concern is that it it could arguably be read to cover not only devices and applications that are involved in the playback of copyrighted audio visual content such as a Blu-ray player or a DVD player, but under certain circumstances might also be read to extend to the content being played back, whether it's on a disk, optical disk in the drive or a training material used for an AI device. So those that's the expanded scope of works that are covered that would be concerning to us.
Thank you, Ms. Elizari.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to again reiterate and agree with some of the comments made by Mr. Geiger and Shane. It's important to recognize, and we provided it in our comments, that we can draw on the concept of AI systems as it's being proposed in the executive order. In fact, the same executive order is proposing that red teaming and such testing of AI is not just appropriate but desirable. So, you know, currently, concepts in policy are being evolved to define AI systems. We can draw on these definitions. And the proposal we brought forward for this exemption is again building on an existing security exemption. And therefore, as Mr. Geiger suggested, has there already appropriate guardrails in place? So I think it's important to emphasize that this kind of terminology of AI, you know, it's a marketing term. This is the venue to actually consider the implication for the research ecosystem that are being, as Shane alluded, very well documented about the concerns about liability to address this anti-hacking limitation. This is in fact the same venue where the security exemption has been considered as well.
Thank you, Mr. Engle, please. Thank you, Mr. England, please.
I agree with uh, Mr. Ayers' remarks a moment ago, and just to expand on them a little bit. Uh, it does sound based on the discussion over the last half hour that uh, the proponents are talking about circumvention that could potentially expose uh, uh, creative works that are currently protected by TPM. So uh, certainly seems like that's the case for video game software that incorporates AI features. That I think they're saying they'd like to be able to circumvent the TPMs of those games. Uh, and uh, uh, it also sounds like they would like to be able to circumvent user authentication on uh, uh, streaming services, which potentially exposes the creative works available through those services.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger.
Yes, uh, so just to the to the point about whether this has moved around from the original proposal, uh, that is is flatly incorrect. We have provided very specific language. Um, and from our initial comments, which included that language uh, to this hearing, the language is is strikingly consistent. Um, so the the proposal has actually not moved around. Uh, the our proposal, it's not limited to generative AI and was very clear about the types of programs that this would operate under. Um, again, it is not all computer programs. Uh, anyone that takes a look at the language we've proposed will see that. Uh, it is computer programs on a lawfully acquired device or machine on which an AI system operates. And we use a definition of AI systems that is presently in use throughout US law as well as uh, uh, the the recent executive order, but not limited to that executive order. Uh, so this is a narrowly defined class of protected works, as well as a specific subset of users consistent with the copyright office's existing exemptions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you. I just would like to offer the quick perspective that um, this rulemaking, the security exemption that we have and security research exemption that's already in place, it didn't happen overnight. It was Mr. Feldman came here repeatedly with a bunch of proponents, different times, developed a very concrete record in which the office was able to evaluate the claims, and we don't have such a record here. In fact, we explained to them in our opposition that we don't understand what you're talking about. The reply did nothing more as informing it. The example that we've given, that we've actually provided to them during this discussion, it's very hypothetical, and it's not a concrete proposal for this rulemaking to actually um, recommend a rec- uh, an exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, please.
I'd just like to align myself with Dr. Elizari and Mr. Geiger. Um, the uh, the comments uh, that are provided by the Hacking Policy Council provide very clear definitions um, which the opponents seem to ignore. And um, in terms of the correct venue, I just note that um, the Department of Justice has weighed in here um, providing support for the proponents of this exemption and drawing the conclusion that this very much is the correct venue and the correct action. Um, and in addition, this is an expand, this is the uh, we already have the terrific record that the the opponents keep mentioning with respect to security research that helps and informs this action, but it doesn't mean that we need to duplicate that. Again, we already have the record that we have created and we're therefore using that in addition to um, this additional information being provided here.
Thank you, um, Mr. Reed, I see your hand is up, so I will give you fifteen seconds, um, but then we are moving on.
Yep, um, the executive order said that the US Copyright Office should report to the administration on AI and copyright, but you all have not even released the first of your three reports. So we may take a completely different perspective, um, because you are all currently undergoing your own process around these questions, and I'd love to see what you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll pass the mic over to my coworker, um, Randy Carl, please.
Yes, hi. Uh, this one's for open policy. In the eighth triennial, with regard to the current exemption on security research, um, the office looked at a proponent's request to remove um, what is known as the access limitation, that circumvention be undertaken solely for the purpose of good faith security research. We ultimately concluded that based on our rulemaking record that the access limitation did not create a reasonable risk of killing good faith security research and absent specific evidence that the access limitation is likely to kill otherwise protected security research. The registrar could not conclude that the language is likely to cause an adverse effect. This cycle, you requested that the office not include similar language in this exemption's regulatory language if granted. Your comment said, since there are concerns regarding the ambiguity associated with the use of the term solely in the security resource exemption, that this should warrant not including this language. Could you provide the office with information about how the language would likely kill any security research associated with generative AI research?
Yeah, I'll speak about this briefly, but I would also like to invite um, you know, uh, other proponents, uh, so the Hacking Policy Council and Hacker One uh, that have a lot of experience with this. Um, would also, I would um, appreciate their response on this. I was just going to give a concrete example. Uh, today, there are concepts of data abuse bug bounties and bug bounties for auditing. I myself, in fact, got uh, and a bounty like this where a researcher might be doing good faith research, uh, producing some um, you know, valuable insight, but also getting compensated right after the fact for such um, activity. So this would be not just solely for good faith research, but it could be a monetary, for example, value. We also know there is a lot of pen testing companies, and I think there is ambiguity about the term solely, which means potentially, you know, what happens if you're actually conducting testing uh, for pen testing purposes of gaining some kind of monetary value? The activity is also producing some value of research. Uh, and this can be done also in the context of academic research, right? Where there is a fellowship or some kind of grant. And uh, so the the context of the testing could also involve some kind of other value. So I think because of that ambiguity, that was actually also documented in the context of the security research discussions, at least in some of the comments that I've seen from CDT and others. Uh, we propose that the there could be a consideration for the removal of the term solely, but it's important to know that any um, you know, as the DOJ uh, suggested in their commentary, uh, even without the removal of the term solely, I think there is a lot of value in creating this exemption. So I would encourage the copyright office to, you know, consider the proposals as they are in support of it. Um, yes, consider the idea of removing the term solely, but moving the conversation along, even if eventually the copyright office decides to have that uh, term solely that we also have in the security research exemption.
And um, Hacking Policy Council or anyone else, do you know of any examples where this language could cause a chilling effect?
Yes, uh, and then I'd like to turn it over to Shane, who I see has his hand up before me. Um, so uh, i- if I recall correctly, from the twelfth, uh, sorry, the uh, the eighth uh, rulemaking process, um, there were two scenarios that we had focused on with solely. One was academic publishing. Uh, so where the language, if it says that it is solely for the purpose of good faith security testing, but an academic also then decides to publish a paper about it, is that, does that go beyond solely? Uh, the second was uh, as part of employment. So for example, if you're a professional security researcher, um, and as an example there, uh, there are security researchers that work at companies. I'll give you an example, uh, Google Project Zero, um, that do find vulnerabilities in software uh, that does not belong to Google, and they will disclose it to the software owner. And they're doing this for the purpose of um, uh, securing the internet. Uh, and in my opinion, society has benefited from that. Even when they win a bounty, they don't keep the bounty. They 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 pass it on or donated to charity. Um, but does that go beyond solely, since they're doing it uh, for compensation, which is part of their employment? And if I recall correctly, uh, as part of the eighth triennial process, uh, the copyright office clarified that uh, it did not view those things as going beyond solely, that uh, academic publishing or, uh, you know, as part of your employment um, would not be, i- if those are are factors, that the copyright office is not considerate to uh, be a section twelve oh one violation. Uh, we felt comfortable with that clarification, uh, and that is why we did not pursue any change to solely um, in in the triennial process, and that is why solely continues to appear in the language that we had proposed for the this ninth triennial process.
Mr. Longprey?
Um, maybe I can speak a little bit uh, about the adverse effects part of it. Um, so uh, in my own lab at MIT, uh, researchers, including myself, were thinking about embarking on trustworthiness uh, research projects to evaluate, in this case, open AI systems. But after reviewing uh, the terms, and even after sending them an email, which was never replied to, we did have lingering concerns about the possibility of um, of legal liability, uh, if we were to conduct that research against the Terms of Service and also if we were to do it and our account was suspended and we traded another account, uh, whether or not that would would uh, also maybe engender, you know, more legal liability. And then in some of our uh, work and co-authors um, have been red teaming uh, mid journey, looking for ways that the text image model uh, might be unreliable. And in the process of doing that research, they also feared liability, their accounts were suspended, they uh, lost money that they'd put into it. Um, and from the letter, uh, there were three hundred and fifty plus people, I'll reiterate, in the research community that have signed on, and one of the bolded parts of that letter, that open letter, is that researchers, independent third party researchers are experiencing chilling effects when doing um, good faith academic research. So I just want to say that I think that there's plenty of evidence that this is happening.
Right, um, Ms. Cohen?
Yeah, I'll just add that um, Hacker One, we partner with good faith researchers and uh, you know, we might be retained by a customer or a software developer to look for bias or um, to do trustworthiness testing. And in the course of that testing, might identify uh, more than vulnerabilities with more than just the software that we've been hired to test. I namely, an underlying issue with an LLM or um, a larger uh, player in the in the market. And there has been some concern uh, about whether or not uh, those should be reported in light of the uh, in light of this potential chilling effect and in light of the failure to protect uh, individuals who are doing that underlying research. Again, not with the customer who has retained us to actually do that testing, but uh, the underlying LLM.
All right, um, we're going to go to Mr. Reed and Mr. England, um, very briefly before moving to the next question.
Thank you. I am, I'm struggling in in large part because m- most of my membership and others, we we kind of align with the 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 proponents. But I just heard Shane talk about that that no email was answered, but Rob's, I mean, Harley Geiger has, Microsoft is a member of the Advisory Committee for Hackers. Charlie Snyder from Google is on the alliance. Heck, you could have emailed me. I mean, we work really closely with Microsoft on on health. And so I'm a little worried that we're being asked to add an exception where a phone call or an email would be possible because Mr. Geiger is a leading expert on this. I remember him when he, when we all worked on the Hill. He's, it's an email to him and and he's probably going to be able to reach to Microsoft. And and I'm I'm disappointed that they didn't email you back. Uh, you've got great advisors at MIT. So I'm I'm trying to figure out how to be with you, but I'm 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 hearing solutions that are acting for the copyright office to move on twelve oh one, which problems that that we could probably solve within our industry um, through better communication. So my apologies if you didn't get the support you needed to do that research. Um, and I, as a member of the industry, can try to do better, but we're out here and Mr. Geiger's got some of those experts on his advisory committee. So let's figure out if we can solve this faster than government.
And I'd like to respond just briefly to uh, Mr. Longprey's uh, comments a few minutes ago. It uh, uh, I think I heard him say that uh, project he was working on uh, was discontinued because of a concern about uh, Terms of Service violations. And he went on to describe some other concerns as well. But uh, if uh, uh, concern over violating services terms uh, is killing projects, nothing else can matter, uh, because the office can't immun- immunize researchers from Terms of Service violations and contract liability. And similarly, Mr. Longprey referred to the uh, uh, open letter that's attached to the uh, uh, academic researchers' comments. Like, I searched that uh, that letter to try to find any reference to circumvention or section twelve oh one. I just couldn't find it. Uh, it was all about Terms of Service violations, and at the risk of repeating myself, the office just can't uh, immunize researchers from contract liability for violating Terms of Service.
Uh, we're going to have to move on.
Can I respond to some point, Ms. Carl, to those points?
Uh, we really have to move on, and if we have time, or if you can work it in, that would be great. Um, yeah, so we wanted to actually go back um, to something that was raised earlier. The office is currently conducting a study regarding the copyright issues uh, raised by generative artificial intelligence. Um, because it is rapidly evolving and because the office's study may touch on related issues, did the office wait three years before opining on an AI related research exemption? Uh, Ms. Elizari?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I think it's important to note that there are perhaps questions that are open on the copyrightability of AI, but there is overwhelming support, including in the executive order, including by CISA, by NIST and by um, other agencies, including those on the line here, that um, testing of AI is important, that red teaming of AI and specifically third party red teaming, which is, by the way, required by law in different states, is a beneficially, um, you know, it's a beneficial social activity. So I think we need to distinguish the fact that uh, while there might be open question on copyrightability of AI, the question on whether testing of AI and the importance of finding those unintended consequences that the White House and others are concerned about, uh, those are well established, right? So I think uh, this is just something that I wanted to raise. And in fact, we have seen already, not just the establishment of an AI Safety Institute by the Department of Commerce, but the creation of a specific working group on the importance of AI red teaming. So we know already that this type of testing um, and and work that is being done by third party researchers is not just acknowledged, it's about to be required in certain segments of the market. And therefore, I think uh, that is an important distinction that I would like to draw, suggesting that we should not wait because we are not waiting on asking uh, those important communities to inform us with their testings and with their findings.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger.
Yes, so you asked uh, whether uh, we should wait three years for uh, for this to come around again. Um, I I would suggest note uh, that uh, section twelve oh one A one C asks for a preponderance of evidence whether this will likely adversely affect non infringing uses in the three year period following this proceeding. And uh, as you can see from the record, particularly that built up by Mr. Longprey, uh, you are hearing about specific adverse effects. You're hearing about a community of hundreds and hundreds of researchers that are worried about adverse effects. Um, I would suggest that the preponderance of evidence demonstrates that it is likely to have additional adverse effects in the subsequent three year period following this proceeding. In addition, the uh, the computer programs that that, or the, I should say, the the uh, study that the copyright office is engaging in regarding the copyrightability of AI, I'll just note that, again, what we are uh, focused on are the code for the unit, user interface, code for the API and software code that drives the algorithm. I would be frankly shocked if the outcome of the copyright office's uh, study is that the code for those uh, those computer programs are not protected works. Um, and then lastly, I would just reiterate that we are not looking for immunization for all liability from deviating from Terms of Service. That would be inappropriate, and that is clearly not what section twelve oh one can or should do. We are only asking the copyright office to provide protection from liability under section twelve oh one. And it would not be a sufficient alternative to ask researchers to work with every AI system operator for every act of research.
All right, um, Mr. Longprey?
Yeah, to answer your question, uh, Ms. Carl, about the timeliness, or can we wait three years? Um, I think the answer is no, because of how essential and critical this research is right now, as echoed by the community. Um, but also because the alternatives aren't really viable. So um, I think Mr. Reed mentioned there needs to be better communication between researchers and companies. But as Mr. Geiger just said, it's it's virtually untenable for thousands of researchers investigating um, general purpose models with so many different uses from law, medicine, education. Um, children are using this in schools and outside of schools. And there are so many different places that need to be investigated that uh, we know these companies are understaffed and have maybe one or two people looking at these applications or answering these emails, and it's virtually impossible for these uh, this communication to be alternative, in my view, to this exemption. And just to address the comments about the letter that Mr. England brought up, it specifically mentions in that very short letter, legal fear of legal reprisal and chilling effects. And that's the thing we're talking about. We don't mention specific statutes in there because it's a community letter. But those are, as we understand it, the primary concern of of legal liability.
All right, Mr. England, and then we're going to move to the next question.
Yeah, so I agree with the premise of your question, that it is premature to adopt a an exemption at this time and refer you to our written comments, which address that at greater length. But I believe that to be true for several reasons. At first, the record here is very incomplete. And I don't think that the office is in a position on this record to make a judgment that exemption is appropriate because of likely adverse effects over the next three years. But more generally, the office's AI study is very wide-ranging, does not focus simply on copyrightability issues. And as described in our written comments, does potentially implicate issues that are relevant here. But NIST and others are studying red teaming issues. This is a very dynamic environment. The issues are all novel. And it doesn't seem like the time to be acting on an incomplete record in the absence of knowledge on exactly how things are going to shape up.
All right, thank you. For opponents, several reply comments, along with the exemption language within those comments, suggest that the exemption could be used to investigate the extent to which AI models reproduce copyrighted material. If the office were to grant a proposed exemption that encompassed research into infringement, would that be something that you would find desirable?
So I'll I'll start that. Just that is the language that we had proposed. Yes, that is that is indeed within the language that we are proposing. What we are describing as AI trustworthiness has a specific definition. It's it's actually relatively clear. These definitions for trustworthiness include several concepts. They include bias, they include resiliency. They also include validity and reliability. And infringement would be a type of reliability harm. So under the definitions that that NIST uses, as well as other international standards specifically, ISO IECT 5723, I know that's a mouthful, but that is the that is the origin of the the trustworthiness definition. Reliability is a goal for overall correctness of an AI system operation or operating under the conditions of expected use. So assuming that the AI system is not designed to produce infringing material, then an AI system that does produce infringing material is not operating correctly under conditions of expected use. And therefore, a researcher that is able to show that an AI system can produce infringing material against its its intent has identified the trustworthiness problem of reliability. So yes, and our language encompasses that type of research.
Thank you. Yeah, and just really quickly, Mr. Geiger, is the reason that you changed your language, proposed exemption language, between the initial comment and reply comment from alignment to trustworthiness for the reason that you just stated?
No, not that particular reason. The 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 reason is because there I I used alignment. And to be clear, to my knowledge, that's the only thing that has changed from our original language, is switching out the word alignment for trustworthiness. It is simply because although alignment does have a definition that generally means keeping AI consistent with societal norms, and so it could work. But there was just a stronger body of of evidence and in general acceptance of the by the community, the standards community, around the word trustworthiness instead. So alignment and trustworthiness could both work. But because of the the use of trustworthiness in NIST's AI Risk Management Framework, NIST's other AI trustworthiness work, as well as the ISO language around trustworthiness, we thought that that was the was the the clearer term to use here.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. And Mr. Ayers, I'll give you fifteen seconds because I want to move on to my colleague Kevin. I know he has a question he wants to ask.
Sure, no problem. So just noting that I think it's a I think it's a tough call because the concern would be a cost-benefit analysis. Is there is there enough benefit in in the possibility of infringing material being identified down the road that it makes up for the more than makes up for the risk to all the rest of the material that that, for instance, might be exposed because of a circumvented blueberry player?
Thank you. And Kevin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a question about how the current request interacts with the existing exemption on security research. And in particular, for proponents, it would be very helpful for you to discuss any ways in which the current exemption is insufficient for the purposes for which you're hoping to circumvent TPMs. And it would also be helpful for opponents to discuss if there are any ways in which that seems to override. But let's start with proponents. Mr. Geiger?
Yes, so I would actually like to cite the Department of Justice letter here. I defer very much to the enforcers of our intellectual property laws, where they say, while the existing exemption for computer security research covers many types of research focused on the security and integrity of AI models, we recognize that it may not be sufficiently broad in its current form to exempt research that falls outside of security concerns. The Department of Justice agrees that an exemption focused on security is possibly not going to cover non-security harms present in AI, such as bias, discrimination, and other trustworthiness issues that we've described here.
Are there any other proponents that like to speak to this issue?
Yeah, this is Dr. Mital Azariah from Open Policy. I would just like to, again, echoes Harley's note and then the underlying statement that the Department of Justice has provided. I think, you know, while there is ambiguity, it's very clear that there are a whole set of unintended consequences that can be stemming from AI systems. Many of them are cited, again, in the executive order, from bias to discrimination to reliability and trustworthiness. And as the Department of Justice suggested, because of this broad set of unintended consequences, it is important that we create this exemption.
Are there any opponents that would like to speak to this question?
Not sure there's.
Yeah, I would just say that the problem with what I see is, one, we don't have a record. But the distinction is, in the current security research exemption, is what constitutes harm? And obviously, when we had the word harm on the records that were created previously, we had examples of what that harm was. And here, we don't have a record that distinguishes the harm. And, you know, the Copyright Office will certainly give sufficient weight to the Department of Justice. But there's nothing that says the Department of Justice dictates what the exemptions will be. And so the Copyright Office will follow the law and and create a record based recommend an exemption based on the record. And there is nothing here.
And Mr. England, if you have something briefly to say?
Yeah, so the original petition that was filed and led to this class referred specifically to security and generative AI. Obviously, we've gone well beyond that now. Yeah, I think the current exemption speaks for itself. It's about security. And so to the extent we have gone beyond security, presumably, the current 16 exemption doesn't doesn't cover it. I think that's that's a problem and an illustration of the breadth of the class that's being proposed. But tribulate off. And I do want to agree with Taylor's comment here that I suspect that CSEP's jurisdiction includes things like security. And as I read the letter, it was very much focused on security. It is not clear to me that they appreciate the full breadth of the scope or that we might be talking about providing access to the kinds of creative content that, based on today's discussion, sounds like might be potentially in the cards given this exemption. And any event, certainly agree with the proposition the office needs to apply copyright law on its own. And that is not to defer to the opinions of any other administrative agency.
Thank you, Mr. England. And very briefly, Mr. Geiger?
Yes, I'd like to to just respond to what Mr. England said about the the Department of Justice's letter being security-focused. And just just to note that page four of that letter states, "CSEP believes that good-faith research on potentially harmful outputs of AI and similar algorithmic systems should be exempted from the DMCA circumvention provisions." Just flat out, that's not talking about security. It is. It is, in fact, recognizing that security is alone insufficient to cover non-security harms under Section 1201, and they have flatly recommended that they be exempted.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. I'm going to pass it back to the Copyright Office, Ms. Carl.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. This has been referenced a couple of times. So we're interested to know, is industry self-regulation sufficient to manage data providence and bias issues in AI research, both generative and overall? If so, then why? And if not, is external research into these questions needed? Mr. Longprey?
Sorry, can you repeat the question? Is the industry able to self-regulate data provenance and bias, is what you're asking?
Yeah, to to manage, to self-regulate the research into these questions.
I see.
Do you want to answer, or do you want to let Mr. Reed?
I'd be happy to answer quickly. I think that, very broadly speaking, the community does not think that it is able to self-regulate in a way that's in the public interest or able to give consent to the broad set of researcher, good-faith researchers that want to do analysis into many different aspects of these systems without them incurring chilling effects. Because in some cases, the companies don't want there to be investigations into their vulnerabilities or the ways their models can produce bias. In other cases, they're understaffed, and so they just don't respond to researchers. But in either case, I I think the answer is no.
Mr. Reed? And just to clarify, you know, we're we're kind of interested in voluntary agreement in terms of self-regulation.
Right, so I'm I'm actually going to side with, so to speak, with the proponents in the sense that I don't think pure industry self-regulation is sufficient. The good news there is, is that's not what's happening. I have the good fortune to work with the with Health and Human Services and with their Office of Civil Rights, in which they're engaging directly with agencies. The Food and Drug Administration similarly had its kitchen cabinet around AI. And so each agency has now been working working with industry, but in a in a quasi-self-regulatory way, in the sense that it is government asking the questions and engaging researchers. So I think it's a misnomer to suggest that industry could do this on on its own and that we live on some magical island. However, I think that right now, what we're seeing is every agency is working directly with providers and especially with foundational model developers to work on these questions. So no, it's not pure industry self-regulation, and that's not what's happening today.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger.
Yes, I would argue that this exemption will actually very much aid the industry in self-regulating. So industry itself, as noted, is not able to realistically identify these algorithmic flaws by themselves. AI systems are presently decentralizing rapidly. We are seeing them become more and more accessible by more and more industry players, some of whom we are not sure where where they are geo-located. And so and it is untenable to expect that research would have to negotiate with each one of these actors, let alone what that would do to the independence of the research for each negotiation. In addition, even for large organizations, well-resourced organizations that do try to take steps to ensure the trustworthiness of their AI models, you hear these systems described as a black box. The fact is that many even large organizations that run AI systems don't often know what their AI system is going to do. And so it is not realistic to expect them to identify algorithmic flaws that they don't even know are there. So enabling researchers to, on an independent basis, without fear of liability under Section 1201, find these flaws and submit them to industry and talk about them in academic conferences will help the industry self-regulate. Really, in the end, what we're asking for here is deregulation.
Mr. Haga?
Yeah, I'll agree with pretty much everything that's been said so far on this. I'll double down on, you know, large organizations that have the resources. You know, they can stand up their own red teams. You know, sometimes they're putting language in that says, you know, you can't red-team our model. We're doing that on on our side of the fence. You know, I think we want to enable a rich, you know, landscape of of researchers that can do this, you know, independently. And further, we do know that some governance is going to come down that requires independent red teaming and independent testing.
Ms. Elizari, and then we will move to the next question.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, as a matter of policy, it's well established that this type of testing activity is something that is desirable. In fact, we already have laws, and I refer you to the law that is in the state of New York that requires third-party audits on certain systems in the context of trustworthiness. And on the other issue, I'm also the co-founder of Disclose.io, which is a prominent set of private ordering contracts that are being being used in order to allow safe harbor activities using contracts. And I very much agree with Mr. Geiger and others that, you know, thinking that private industry would go and roll out those private consents is very, very much unrealistic, even in security, even though we have all this progress, including Frameworks like Disclose.io being promoted by CISA and others and required by federal agencies. We still don't have broad adoption of that contractual language. It certainly, to the case we have, it's focused on security. So we certainly need this action from the Copyright Office in order to promote this desirable activity, as Mr. Geiger mentioned.
I can add really quickly that the current reality is that very few, maybe elite labs and institutions, organizations, usually that have connections with these well-resourced companies, are the ones that are given special permissions to do this research. And the much broader community is left usually with some form of chilling effects for uncertainty or not hearing back. And as a result, isn't doing that research when, you know, there are a hundred million-plus people using these services from across the world. And two years ago, that was zero. It's the fastest growing. And so there are so many vulnerabilities that require all the different communities to participate. And self-regulation isn't getting us there.
Hey, thanks. Melinda?
Oh, thank you very much. So I just had a quick question. We're moving. Brandy got to it a little bit, to the non-infringing use section. And then we're going to go to adverse effects. And unfortunately, because of time, we might have to make these responses brief. But the office is not aware of, at least at the moment, any case or legal authority ruling that the actions under the specific proposed exemption are not infringing. In fact, we've said some statements about fair use in our previous triennial rulemaking. But are proponents or opponents aware of any authority on the question of non-infringing uses, such as fair use or Section 117, for good-faith AI security research? And that, again, is for both proponents and opponents. Mr. England?
No, not aware of any authority. But it is conspicuous in the record here how little attention there has been to the question of whether uses are infringing or not infringing. Since you raised 117, I'll note that not clear to me how that would apply to most of the use cases that have been talked about today. No user owns a copy of ChatGPT. So that just seems totally irrelevant, meaning that boils down to to fair use. And here, I think the the fair And here, I think the the fair use analysis that hasn't really been talked about much in the comments is very different from the kind of analysis that has often been possible when the office granted exemption. So here, the proposed exemption is not limited to non-commercial users. In fact, I understand that a number of the witnesses today are representatives of commercial entities. So the Warhawk case tells us we need to take into account the commerciality of the use. And in terms of the the nature of use, the we've heard today that the potentially ability, this exemption potentially give the ability to access creative content and be able to use it. However, it might be available once the access to a system has been circumvented. And so, yeah, I think the first factor is problematic here. Similarly, factor two, if we are talking about circumventing TPMs on DVD players and streaming services and video games, we're potentially talking about creative works. I don't really have enough of a record to judge how much copyrighted works need to be copied for these purposes. Because proponents just haven't told us very much about that. And similarly, for the fourth factor, seems like market harm is a possibility if we're talking about exposing creative works at least.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger.
So I would strongly suggest that the fair use analysis is identical to the analysis that the office conducted in past triennial rulemakings for security testing. We are have have no interest and do not want to see this exemption used for infringement. This exemption is for, is is directed at fair use. AI trustworthiness research is fair use. It contributes to the advancement of computer science, and it leads to the the production of new creative works. We'll note that in the the eighth triennial proceeding, the Register of Copyright, the Register of Copyright said that in prior rule, prior rulemakings, the office has consistently found that exemptions to allow non-infringing analysis of computer programs are likely to promote the availability of copyrighted works. I'll also point out that the language that we are proposing specifically states that the results of the research would not be used or maintained in a manner that infringes on copyright. We have in fact tried to craft our exemption request in such a way that that infringement would fall out of the of the exemption. And we believe this to be a fair use activity, again, very much in line with the analysis that occurred under security testing. If we need to go to into a deeper analysis of fair use, I think that that would be possible. But again, I I I think that it's, I feel relatively confident that in this conclusion that such research is fair use.
Thank you. And I should have clarified, I was, the question was more directed towards authority. But I will let you go ahead, Mr. Taylor, and then Mr. Reed.
Yeah, yeah. So I would just simply say that there, this rulemaking with every exemption requires an evidentiary record, and there can be nothing that's assumed based on any other exemption that appears to be similar. And we've evolved significantly since two thousand and one, and that evolution has only gone to renewals. But we cannot create an exemption based on, oh, yeah, this smell sounds like something that we've already created. So with that, I don't think there's a record here.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Yes, I'm I'm dangerous, doing the dangerous thing of asking a question I don't really answer to here. But borrowing from the previous session that we just had, Mr. Geiger's point about you can't use the 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 work done from research in a way that would be profitable. But what if I were to red team you and pull that data down on the way that you implement your LLM? And I were to train my LLM with it, if I was a competitor? Let's say I'm a pen testing company and you do great work, and I look at how you're implementing it. I want to research your your system for bias. I can use that to train because, as we just discussed, it's unclear where that use is. And for those of you who were in the previous session, there was a major conversation about can I use someone else's data in such a manner? So I'd argue, like the previous commenter, about the the body of evidence right now. And I'd need to think really hard about, is this, does this open the door for someone not exactly stealing your copyrighted material, but rather training their own LLM under the auspices of research and checking, because it's not, in fact, taking your copyrighted material? Thank you.
Thank you. And for timing purposes, Mr. Geiger, since you already responded, I'll give you fifteen seconds.
Thank you. I would note that our comments did in fact claim that this was fair use. This is on the record, is at the bottom of page six of our reply comments. There's also absolutely no evidence that the proposed exemption would result in increased copyright infringement or piracy. With regard to the example that was just supplied by Mr. Reed, I would argue that that is likely out of the scope of solely for purposes of good faith AI trustworthiness research. If you're building a commercial product with the results, that it seems that we have gotten farther afield from academic publishing, or if this is part of your employment and you are a professional researcher. So so no, I I don't think that qualifies. And you can make the same arguments with existing exemptions, such as security testing. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, yes, I have a question for proponents. Are there white papers or other manuals collecting techniques for the kind of security research that you hope to engage in that describe the variety of techniques that are used for this kind of research? Mr. Longprey? Oh, I'm sorry.
Bologna, do you want to go ahead?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't see that you raised your hand. Sure, yeah. Hacker One has published a number of different guides for AI trustworthiness and red teaming, which are made available on our website and are drawn from our multitude of experiences doing this red teaming for customers.
Thank you. Mr. Longprey?
Uh, we'd be happy to provide lots of resources related to that. There are many papers.
Mr. Geiger?
Yeah, just to say that there are, there are indeed numerous white papers describing AI red teaming and testing techniques. And and if you if you'd like to to know more, we can certainly provide some of them with to you as well.
Mr. Hargrave?
A very similar response. We've produced webinars, you know, several technical documents. Back in my time with MITRE, same thing, MITRE Atlas has been stood up. That talks a lot about some of the things we're discussing here. So happy to provide some materials.
Ms. Elizari, you raised hands again, but.
Yeah, I would just echo. There are thousands of papers, including those produced by the hundreds of scholars that, you know, the letter that that Shane referred to that described the discipline of AI auditing and algorithmic auditing, and that's that's a record or that's information we're happy to provide.
And Mr. Reed? Oh, you are muted.
Somebody had to do it. Sorry, I drew the short straw. Our our Connected Health Initiative has a very comprehensive trustworthiness guideline that also provides insight into each level of responsibility. This is particular for the healthcare industry, but it's it's appropriate very broadly, and we'll make sure to submit that for the record.
Thank you. So I wanted to get into alternatives a little bit. So this is a question for the supporters, proponents, and then I'll do a follow-up for the opponents of the proposed exemption. So Hacker One asserts that while research access and bias bounty programs are available for identifying things like bias, these programs are often limited and avail, in availability and a scope. And I also believe the Department of Defense had a bug bounty program for AI bias that I believe ended in February twenty twenty four. Could you please speak a little bit more to why these are allegedly unreasonable alternatives and what the proposed exemption covers? And you can do that last part briefly, because I know we touched on it a little bit, but please go ahead.
Sorry, I I didn't hear what, why, what is unreasonable?
Why things like research access and bug bounty programs that are currently available are limited in availability and scope and why they aren't reasonable.
Well, as you mentioned, we did discuss this. It's generally that the the current scope and the protections offered are for security testing primarily. And so the expansion of the of testing to for trustworthiness, for bias, for discrimination is necessary in order to be able to cover the the scope of programs that we do, including for the Department of Defense and other government customers.
Thank you, Mr. Longprey.
If you're talking about the company programs, they are very limited in scope. They self-select who gets to opt in and do that research by an application pool. We know many, many top-tier researchers that never got their applications accepted or heard back from them. Not all companies even have these programs. And so it turns into like a very small set of of researchers that get to do this, that don't have necessarily the the independence that third-party independent good faith researchers would have.
Mr. Geiger?
So I would just say that research access programs and bias bounties are very good practices that some elements of the industry are engaging in right now. However, it is not something that is industry-wide. And as noted, those those types of programs generally place rules around how this, how the the TPMs can be circumvented. And so which circumstances, with which methodologies, which assets? And then they have terms regarding disclosure. In addition, they're not made available to the entire community of good faith researchers. So they are helpful programs, but they are not an equivalent. Also note that what we are seeing with AI is that AI instances are being licensed in other places. So an AI model owner will create the model and may provide, you know, an interface directly to there. But also, other applications can take an instance of that, license an instance of it. So let's just say an e-commerce platform, for example, licenses an instance of a generative AI model on the e-commerce platform. In that circumstance, you would have to be looking, you know, the the e-commerce program itself may not have its own bias bounty or its own research access program. But the fact that it is being, using the generative AI model in its instance can create important new avenues of research. The fact that it's in an instance could yield unique results. And of course, there is the API, the the technical technical environment within which that instance sits. So these researcher access programs are are very helpful, but absolutely not an equivalent for enabling independent good faith trustworthiness research. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Elizari.
Yeah, I just wanted to double down on the issue of the inclusivity of the program. So has Mr. Geiger and Mr. Shane mentioned, those programs are very, very, very limited. They are not currently widely adopted, and they are really open to to selected few. And in the context of AI trustworthiness research, there is an important element of the diversity and the skill set that is rooted in diversity of the auditors themselves. So that is to suggest this type of scoping is, you know, just doubling down on the comments being made. It's especially problematic because it's the type of diversity and diverse backgrounds of testers that we want to enable in the context of bias and discrimination research.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
So I want to address briefly the the bias bounty and the concept that if some is good, more is better. That may not be true. The largest problem that we have with with the concept of bias bounties and why a little more restriction is is the norm is that bias is not Boolean. It it isn't like pen testing, did I get root or not? Was I able to get access to your entire machine? Bias is obviously something in which both cultures, areas, terms are different. And therefore, one of the things that everyone has been concerned about in the bias bounty area is, do we gamify it so much that it becomes not as clear? In pen testing and red teaming on the security front, what I'm normally trying to do is, can I have access to something I am not supposed to have access to? In bias testing, I'm looking for something that is, is this result what I would expect as a person of this culture or of this norm? Or in the healthcare in implementation, it gets very interesting because of how physicians provide records. So they go into their electronic health record. So I think that we shouldn't just assume magically that if if there's some difficulty in doing bug bounty, I'm sorry, bias bounties, it's all because, gosh, nobody thought of this and we just can't make it work. There are practical reasons. And then finally, I would kind of come try to ground this back in why we're here at a twelve oh one procedure, which is the Copyright Office needs to see a body of work that is significant before making significant changes. We have a triennial process that starts with the presumption that the copyright of the person who holds, that that developed the material has some right of exclusivity, some right to prevent. And the exclusions, the the opportunities that have been created through security and other met, and other exemptions are very specific for a reason, because it starts with the position that the copyright holder has a certain amount of right to protect their material. So let's be cautious by saying more is always better on bias bounties. And then second, let's re-ground this in the conversation, which is the purpose of the Copyright Office is to is to ensure that those who have that right are able to exercise it appropriately. And until we see a larger body of work, I'm not sure we can jump to the conclusion that we should just open all the doors.
Thank you. Did any other opponents have any comments on whether they thought those programs or research access were reasonable alternatives? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up, so I will move on to our next question. And this kind of goes back a little bit, but and I'm not sure if everyone touched on it before, but besides those discussed in the comments and what's already been mentioned during this hearing here, are these the only TPMs that need to be mentioned? Are there some that haven't even been mentioned by everyone? And that's a question for the proponents and then also for the opponents. Are you aware of any other TPMs that would need to be accessed in the use cases that proponents have described that you already, that you haven't already mentioned? Just because we're running low on time, I just want to caveat the responses. Mr. Longprey?
Uh, in our comment, I believe we have a list of ten that breaks some of them down more finely that might be considered. I can look that up now.
And Mr. England?
I think it's a very difficult question to answer because the the record here is very thin. But if you accept that this exemption would allow circumvention on TPMs of video games that have AI features, that also implicates the TPMs and video game consoles because the TPMs and consoles and games interoperate to provide a secure ecosystem for playing games. And there's been plenty of record in other proceedings about the security and piracy issues associated with hacking of consoles. But that could could somehow be implicated here, depending on how broad you think the exemption is.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger.
Yes, I would I would just point you to the the comments from the the joint academic researchers, which lists numerous technological protection measures that that may be implicated. There are probably others that, you know, we could, we could try to find, but there there are a a variety. I would just note also on on the continued referring to the record as as being thin. You know, we we have provided a very specific language, provided very specific TPMs. We provided specific instances of adverse effects, as well as noting a broader community fear of adverse effects of section twelve oh one. I would argue that the record is actually very robust in terms of a standard of preponderance of the evidence that there will likely be additional adverse effects in the coming three years.
Thank you. And then I just had one question. I'm going to pass it to Mr. Lee. We're talking about TPMs, and I know that both Hacking Policy Council and Joint Academic Researchers really described the terms of account or terms of service, which is outside the realm of copyright law and outside the realm of this rulemaking, have, how others have mentioned before, as prohibiting the activities that the proposed exemption seeks to permit. Would you mind just very briefly discussing why you believe the terms of count or terms of service are not actually the cause of the adverse effects for these security researchers? Mr. Geiger, go ahead.
I'll I'll turn it over to Shane very quickly. The 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 terms of service are, in in many ways, are beside the point. That's the terms of service are not the not the technological protection measure. When we describe TPMs, we are describing, you know, account requirements. We are We are describing rate limits. We're describing guardrails. The terms of service really come into play when you lose your accounts. They are they're the the reason sometimes that an individual loses their account. However, you can have your account suspended for for any reason. And I would just, you know, you know, even if you're not violating terms of service. So this is really not about terms of service and changing terms of service. This is about removing liability under section 1201 for good faith AI trustworthiness when you are circumventing TPMs that include account suspension. And I would just reiterate also that we fully understand and our language does not contemplate prohibiting AI system operators from having terms of service to prevent behavior that they find undesirable, including good faith research. A section 1201 exemption does not prevent that. A section one, a section 1201 exemption merely helps reduce the adverse effect due to that that is created by liability under section 1201. So to the extent that operators still want to be able to prevent or a a undesirable conduct taking place in their platforms, they still retain every right to do so.
Thank you. And just before I let you go, Mr. Taylor, I'm just going to set a roadmap because we have a very little time left. I'm going to have you respond, Mr. Taylor, pass it to Mr. Lee, and then we'll do closing remarks. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to point out to the Copyright Office that the register back in the 2003 opinion did look at end user license agreements and and said that end user license agreements were not subject to 1201 and that they were a separate contractual violation. So if you go back, it I think it starts with discussion is around page 149 of the 2003 opinion. And sorry, I didn't cite it earlier in our opposition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor, and thank you for the pass, Ms. Kern. I'd like to zoom out very slightly here and discuss adverse effects more broadly. And and this is principally for proponents. If you could discuss, you know, the need for trustworthiness research now and over the next three years, you know, prior to the next triennial. And you know, if there are any concerns that you have about if there isn't an exemption, you know, what what kinds of what kinds of harms might result?
I'm happy to speak to that a little bit. I think that three-year T didn't exist, neither did many of the other large foundation models and systems. And now they have, I don't want to be a broken record, but they have hundreds of millions of users. Many of those are children. They're being used in a wide variety, used and misused in a wide variety of industries and applications because their general purpose in the way that they're being adopted and and used. And so we've already seen a number, if you follow the news, of harms and issues speculated and real of how these can have lasting negative effects due to bias discrimination, all sorts of of different things. And so I expect the next three years, we're going to see a lot more of that as adoption becomes wider. There are new applications. And even with the existing applications, people are finding new ways to use or misuse them. There have already been recent research to show that in multilingual uses of these models, they're far more vulnerable than in English. And so the multilingual communities that aren't being tested as rigorously as the companies are testing the English prompts are seeing much higher cases of bias toxicity, misinformation, things like that. And so we expect the next three years, there will be many harms that need to be investigated.
And please, yes, Dr. Parris.
Yeah, so I'll I'll be quick. So I think the the good news is is that we're we're talking about this right now. You know, we haven't had, you know, a huge breach. There are harms that we know about. There are issues with trustworthiness, but honestly, we haven't really seen the extent of of, you know, maybe some of the damage that could be done. So it's an important time to really understand that this research is is nascent. We really need to perform this research and giving these opportunities now versus three years from now is really important.
Thank you. And I'll pass this back to my corporate office colleagues.
Thank you so much. So we're going to give everybody fifteen seconds for closing remarks because we are at four thirty, and then we're going to close out the session. So if you'd like to give a closing remark, like I said, we'll limit it to fifteen seconds and just use the raise hand function. And the first person I see is Mr. Reed.
Thank you very much for holding this. I want to publicly say that we'd love to work with the proponents to find a solution that would work without having to wade through 1201 procedures every three years. And I would I would open open that up to find some some solutions. Thank you.
Mr. Geiger.
The good faith AI trustworthiness research is fair use. It contributes to the advancement of computer science, leads to the production of new creative works. There's no evidence at all that the proposed exemption would result in increased infringement or piracy, and in fact, may well produce the opposite effect by strengthening AI system trustworthiness. Research is being chilled by fear of liability for circumventing TPMs under section 1201, with more than 350 researchers and journalists calling for protections of this kind of work. The Department of Justice likewise said that security, the security exemption does not likely extend to non-security harms. Our proposed exemption language is carefully crafted to promote public benefit and prevent misuse, prevent infringement, modeled closely on existing exemption language for a particular class of users and a particular class of software. I will leave us with a Department of Justice quote. In their letter, they state, independent research on the functioning and security of AI systems will likely be essential to ensuring the integrity and safety of AI systems in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Oh, Ms. Cohen, you're muted.
Thank you. Independent good faith testing of AI systems for trustworthiness issues is really important to maintain the responsible deployment of AI. And although bias bounty and research access programs can provide AI researchers with permission, those channels are not a replacement for the exemption under section 1201. They're helpful, but they don't extend to all system providers, nor do they apply to all good faith researchers. So we support the exemption language proposed by the hacking policy council. I think it supports copyright researchers and the public. And it uses specific definitions and lessons learned from the highly successful security testing exemption, which has only strengthened our cybersecurity posture.
Thank you, Mr. Longprey.
Yeah, I guess I'd love to leave it on the note about timeliness. I think while the technology is extremely nascent, the breadth and extent of adoption is so broad and not so nascent. And the effect that it's going to have on people and society is already coming to bear fruit in negative ways. And that compels the importance of good faith, third-party independent research, which currently we see as being chilled, and we think the evidence on that is fairly clear. And this would go a really long way in reducing those chilling effects.
Thank you, Mr. England.
I'd just like to underscore that this is a very broad exemption, much broader than what was originally contemplated by the petition or by the NPRM, and broader in ways that potentially implicate not only software that is used to secure AI systems, but creative content that is also available within those systems. And it just doesn't seem like the proponents have made a record that would possibly justify the the full breadth of the exemption they are seeking. And if the office applies its traditional rigorous analysis here, it can't possibly grant an exemption of the breadth that's been requested.
Thank you, Ms. Elizori.
So mitigating the breadth of unintended consequences that can be caused by the wide adoption of AI is one of the highest priorities of this government and this administration. As as Mr. Geiger and my fellow proponents have suggested, we have proposed and brought forward a very careful with guardrails, with the proper justification type of framework, building on the extensive record of the security research exemption. And it's therefore very appropriate to consider this exemption. And the time is now, and we have seen this in other policy action from the administration. We must equip the security and auditing, the AI auditing community with the tools that that enable them to perform this type of research, that we are asking them to do so in other actions in a way that reduces the chilling effect that was well documented on the record.
Thank you, and I will pass it back to the office's deputy general counsel for closing remarks.
Thanks, everyone, for being here and for your written comments as well. We are adjourned for today. We'll resume 1201 hearings tomorrow at 11:00 AM when we will discuss video game preservation. Thanks.